We're next on our agenda, and that is Darlene. We're going to give us an update on AmeriCorps. And I also want to state that there was a suggestion I found on my desk that we should have the seal of Barnstable behind us. And I thought it was an excellent suggestion, and it came from Darlene, who has an eye for these things.
I was just sitting there, I was looking there.
We could put up...
That's right, no, I think it's a good thing, so. We have a seal we can carry with us.
We could put up the flag, maybe. We have that big seal that Paul Shue pulled off the Bay in the rebuild. It's got a crack in it, but it'd be hard to...
It would be like the Liberty Bill.
It just would be nice, because we have a flag.
We have a flag.
Remember when I tried to put up the flag?
Yeah, you did, it was way too big.
It's kind of big, somebody else has to...
And it didn't have...
We can do something, we can do something on the chief.
I guess they would look nice.
It would, yeah.
What a great-looking emblem behind us, like Caesar.
Sometimes I feel like those days are right here. I would just also like the commissioners, ask the commissioners, are you still planning to come to graduation?
Yes, tomorrow morning. No, day after tomorrow, Friday.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
At 9:00 AM. Starts at 9:00 or 8:30?
Well, I mean, it starts at 9:00. I don't know if you're interested in seeing the puppet show, but that's what's first.
Okay, I have to be, you have to speak, but I may have to have, somebody else is supposed to be at this Human Service Advisory Council tomorrow.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask you... No, it's Thursday. But also, I wanted to know if you're going to be able to give out certificates.
Yes.
What time?
That's about, I'd say, close to 11:00, so I don't...
Yeah, we'll be...
Sometimes, you know, people like to come in and just go, and that's it.
I'll be there at 9:00.
I'll be there at 9:00, too.
Okay, and I'll stay there, they'll be covered, and we'll...
Our son is leaving, you know, he's leaving tomorrow morning to go out Cape, and we're stopping to visit him, so I plan to come, you know, at 9:00, probably even 10:00 or so.
Okay, then, what time is your meeting, 10:00?
I believe it's at 9:00, so I can be there if I can. I mean, I just have to go and see this first section of this meeting, and then I can, I can leave. So, it's over, they're still talking about compassion, which I thought we all decided to go away with, but some people...
Then I just wanted to let you know that we were, we have a plaque, it's not a plaque, it's a, the members are trained at the Need Building each year out of the Coast Guard Station. That's the first time they're all, the whole corps is together, because they're a born-and-wealth fleet, and they come together for this training out of the Need Building, they're traditional, and then they, so they have a real connection to that building there on, at the Coast Guard Beach.
Yes, yes.
So, the picture is, we have a picture for the 10-year anniversary, we had it for the reunion for the members and the alumni, so we framed one for Rob O'Leary, for his save-service dedication that he conducted there in Boston. On the hill, they had, you know, the Governor Patrick, and he was out there, and he spoke on behalf of all of service in Massachusetts, and worked with the conference committee, and him and Matt Patrick both. On the house side, it was Matt Patrick, so I, you know, our Cape legislative delegation was very strong in the support of community service, so that, we have one for Matt, and we have one for...
Well, they'll be there tomorrow as well to receive those, that's great.
Yeah, okay, good. Hopefully, I mean, I had heard Rob is having some problems that he is trying to solve, so hopefully they won't come in the way.
There's a lot going on there right now, as they're trying to kind of come to a close for Rob.
It's always a threat.
I doubt if they will...
They'll have a staff member there, someone would be there to examine it.
Yes, I'm sure they will.
I talked to Michaela, so I don't know whether it'll be made with Michaela, but that's what the plan is for the graduation, and then for you two to speak. I didn't know Bill wanted to talk with you.
Although I always want to talk, I mean, Pape had to do that.
And then the certificates.
And then we can, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, well, we thank you.
Yep, and I just wanted to give you kind of a little bit of an overview, this is kind of a new year for us. We were happy, very happy, that we received the vistas at the very end. Apparently, a couple of the states could not take the vistas, because when we turned in our concept paper, they had far too many applications and were turned down, and then the corporation told us at the last minute and said, "We picked up your proposal, and we'd like to fund it," so I was like, "Okay," but it was like hit the ground with it. So, we accepted them, and we're going to try to track them along with these recovery members, along with the full corps. So, all of these streams of service are funded through the Corporation for National Community Service.
Explain to me, vistas as opposed to what we...
AmeriCorps members, the recovery members are, is a one-time, boots-on-the-ground type of thing for stimulus.
Right.
And that is to build the capacity of regional homelessness.
Okay.
Through the HAC program.
Right.
Want to make it clear that we are not going to be involved in what's already funded through grants, through what you're doing with the 2-1-1.
Right.
With the recovery.
Right.
That will have, most of the activities are explained there, be sheltering assistance, small maintenance, housing maintenance, this is the same thing with the Cape Light Compact, they have energy programs and education programs. We are staying away from what is already being done by the county unless there is, you know, anything that would come up in terms of an activity that they were asking us to do that is already being offered by the county. We will be sure to check in with the county departments who are, who are involved in that. So, that's not the plan for these recovery members, it's foreclosure counseling, and then they have some other activities. What we wanted to do is keep it in the group service, because we've learned that flexibility for these members isn't key, so they can't just, just do one thing, and it doesn't help with their professional development to do that. So, they'll be doing group service, and that type of service may be building capacity through group projects that they're involved in.
No, that's just an added component, and it doesn't lend itself to duplication and redundancy, so that's terrific, and everybody knows they align, so that's great. Let her finish, and then, unless you want to have your question right on that?
No, this is, this is generally are a little different than AmeriCorps members, AmeriCorps members are direct, and vistas can be indirect. AmeriCorps members, generally, with this recovery, they're doing a nonprofit capacity building only as a special initiative. Generally speaking, they don't do the types of, they don't have the flexibility that the vista members would have.
Right, and the vista members can do things like human services, grant writing?
Well, this is the thing, the whole idea of getting these vistas was to build, has been, like, we've been talking about this for three years, trying to build the capacity of the Human Services Department through not taking, you know, utilizing money from the county, but finding resource in right there. And this is a resource that we do not have to put money into. And it will help with, now, this, we did ask for assistance with the 2-1-1 project, they can, it's a wide variety, and they don't have to be the only one. I know that since then, because we were turned down, there was someone that they brought on to be, to be a staff person, right, to be involved in this grant. So, this will just be able, they'll be able to assist with the expansion of that through activities that are supportive of that.
That's great.
And then, the other part of it was that we asked for a grant writer for nonprofits. The corporation does not feel that a vista member could come in and just do this exclusively. Felt like that part-time, we can train them and work with them through the Resource Development Office to do that. So, the other part of that person's time, so it would be part 2-1-1, part nonprofit grant writing, with the assistance of the Resource Development Office. And then, the other person will be at the college with this volunteer generation, building the capacity of this volunteerism through that.
Right, with through students and student volunteer and internships and that sort of thing.
Right, and that will really get that off the ground, it'll put, you know, it'll put something in it and get it going.
Excellent. And then we have our...
Yes.
Our resource-based AmeriCorps.
Yep, then we have our, you know, the recovery members. The only crossover I see, probably the Martin Luther King projects that they pick probably will have usually is human services focused, so they may come up with something, so if you have any ideas on what you, you know, kind of, we're going to form, for the first time, an inter-core council. We have, this year, we have more members returning than any other year of AmeriCorps. I think a lot of it has to do with the economy, a lot of it has to do with the buzz around AmeriCorps and so on. But both, both things have caused a lot of the members to return, so we have two returning members as supervisors in the houses.
Excellent.
And then we have five returning members, so to be able to challenge them, what we, what we've come up with is an inter-core council. So, this inter-core council will hear different initiatives and ideas, community outreach pieces, so one of the, one of their charges will be to try to think of different ideas for service projects for Martin Luther King, because that's usually their first one out of the chute, so, but if you have ideas that you'd like to put forward.
Ken, I'm sure you've been in communication with Beth Albert and Human Service Department over all of this, and I would also get in touch with Jackie Fields with Human Rights Commission, she could probably, you know, lend some ideas in regards to that, so that's a, that's a great coordinating piece there. Bill, you wanted to ask some questions?
Well, the first thing that occurred to me when we took a look at the flexibility for it is that some of the success on, let's say, implementing any type of a regional, regional program, you have to have an architect that basically does the planning, and then with a plan in place, you could identify a builder that basically puts, you know, puts that together. And I wonder if that's something that they could participate in, because I think originally AmeriCorps was supposed to be a, I'd say, contributed to planning activities that would be useful, looking at the area of concentration on foreclosure counseling, building, nonprofit capacity building for homelessness and things like that. How do they, how do they presently interact with existing organizations in order to move that forward? Because part of the problem, in my eyes, has been, we have many parallel organizations in this, sort of little silos that are all over the place. Do they perform any type of a coordinating or collaboration effort, in order to keep in communication with all the other, you know, all these other organizations and agencies? Foreclosure counseling, for example, I know HAC does a fair amount of that, do they, are they in communication with an organization like HAC or others to, you know, let's say...
Oh, yeah, they're, each one of these, you know, for every service that we have, there's a service partner, that service partner represents that, that organization. So, they have a volunteer coordinator at HAC that will work with our staff, Amanda, coordinator of the recovery. They work together to make sure that the, that AmeriCorps doesn't get lost in the service, and that their service is being represented by the member. So, it's both, and they're involved in the, they, they are, the individual placements put them there at the organization, and there's expectations on both sides of the members, so they're involved with the service partner in the, in the whole process.
I just want to bring that up, because since we're on Cape, people should, you know, should know that we're not operating independently of, you know, of all of the, you know, good work that's being done at nonprofits and Cape.
There's 100, we've worked with over 100 service organizations.
And that's just, that's just scratching the surface.
Every municipality, every municipality, and most of the federal organizations in the park service.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very far-reaching, so it's a great, great thing. So, having said all that, was there a, something else you wanted to add about the...
No, I just wanted to, go ahead.
Go over all of it.
The Vista program, is it anticipated to be ongoing, multi-year?
I think that because we had the capacity and the success of our AmeriCorps program, is that's why the corporation asked us to, to do this, I think if we would have said no, it would have been really hard to, but I think this will set, you know, this is like a pilot project, I think it'll set us in, in motion to have vistas over the next...
Do we have to apply each year for Vista, or is this like a...
I think that this year, because this is recovery, these recovery programs, I don't know whether, how the money is going to, the way they looked at these, it's a one-year thing.
Right.
But, because we have now have a reputation of being able to, with the corporation, to hit the floor running on something they really had a focus on, then we can put in next year all this, build on the success of this, and I think we have, we still have to apply, though, maybe, yes.
Okay, so you have to apply, but we have a good chance.
Yes.
Darlene, what is the anticipated funding for AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps in this next several fiscal years, is it, I mean, is it expected to be there? You got the 750 this year.
This, this, this year was tough at the state level, because that $750,000 that the state receives leverages 25 million in money. So, even though we're federally funded...
You need that state.
You need the state money to...
They won't go forward.
They threw us out there competitively. That allows other programs, AmeriCorps programs in Massachusetts, to serve. Otherwise, they would shut them down July 1. So, that's...
That's in the budget.
Yeah, I think we ought to send a letter of thanks to Senator Murray for, you know, for the support.
We should do that. Yes, we will. Yeah, let's send one to both of them, because they did take the lead on this, and to Matt Patrick.
Yeah, very, very good, very helpful, very supportive.
All right.
And the training is slated to start for all of them, we're trying to start all these guys at the same time, it is, like I said, like a balancing act here, but, and the training will have specifics geared toward the different streams, like recovery will have to pull out and do other pieces of training, but all of them will start together the day after Labor Day, and so that's when it's all geared to start out.
Just one other thing, on the, on the letter of thanks to Senator Murray and to Matt Patrick, perhaps a summary of what, you know, what we've done and what we're going to be able to do would be, you know, would be useful, because the next time we ask them, we can point to, we have the right amount of gratitude when we're actually doing stuff.
So, do you want me to put the letter in a draft?
Yeah, that, yeah, that would be terrific, right. Yeah, and just pull it, just, you know, quick, so they can take a quick look at it and see, see why we're so grateful.
Okay, I just want to thank all of you, and just wanted to come in and give you, what I think is exciting.
Do you know... You're, you're, you're being very understated here, Darlene, I know that you're probably overwhelmed by the whole thing, so, thank you, Darlene, for keeping all those balls in the air.
They start the day after by every day, which is April 7th, September. Do you have the, or have you talked to Mark about when they'll be coming in, what's that, all day where they meet everybody type thing?
Pledge ceremony.
Pledge ceremony, and that's when they meet all of the rest of the departments, et cetera.
Yes, we need to schedule that, that's usually tough to schedule with all of you, so that's...
We could do it October 1st.
Yeah, well, it's in October, on a Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, they bring them to the assembly and introduce them to everybody.
Well, we also, you have a pledge, they pledge to serve this year.
And we need to pledge, okay, all right, so.
You get to picture what you, it's on the...
So, we need to coordinate that, is what you're telling me about?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Well, tentatively, then, we'll look at, Bill just said October 7th is the first Wednesday, so let's say tentatively, let's look at that.
All right.
So, then we'll just have to...
And we start, usually we start at 9:00.
Right.
Is that good?
Yeah, October 7th, pledge ceremony, that's...
Yeah, they have to come back for the assembly later, but that's just the way it works.
That's for you guys, it's making it a long day, but that's...
That's fine.
October 7th.
Okay.
And that doesn't work, it may only when you get back, there's no issue with that, okay?
Thank you, well, go, and Darlene, thank you so much. All right, thanks for all your work. All right, and the suggestion, the housekeeping suggestion. Decor. Okay.
If you could just put that in the needs, if you would.
I will. I will make a motion to approve the action items 1 through 15. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this, this number 7, that's money that's in addition to the money that we put into that? That we're asking for more federal assistance to supplement what we...
Yeah, Bill gets a federal grant for that project in addition to the money, we didn't put any money this year in, so. I have another vote, actually, since we are not meeting next week, correct? I need you to vote to authorize the county administrator or assistant county administrator to execute warrants for county's payable and all other needs, action items for the week of July 27th through the 31st, 2009.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, we're on that subject, if you don't mind, before you get into the reports, on the first Wednesday, first week of August, Mark is on vacation, and I have a conflict with being here at 2:00, so it would just be no staff.
Which is okay, we have Sean O'Brien's coming in with the incident management team.
So, you have an assembly meeting, so your meeting starts at 2:00.
Yes, okay.
I mean, if you want, I can have Kara in here, or somebody in here, and take notes, whatever.
I think that would be a good idea, yeah.
But I have a conflict, so.
That's fine.
It's my fault, so.
No problem.
And then, on the 12th, I want to make sure you guys know, Bill asked me to move the start time up because of time constraints, so we're going to start at 9:00, if you guys remember.
On August 12?
That's August 12, that's our tour, the cooperative extension tour.
Ah.
So, we're going to start at 9:00, you guys convene the meeting, and you do publicly, do the public comment, do that kind of stuff, and then we should plan on having the bus leave, everybody on it by 9:30, and then we will return to the county complex by 2:30, but we'll be at the farm around 12:30, 1:00 for lunch.
You could come to property.
He's got a couple of side technical matters, he's got some things to see, so, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. All right, so we're signing these, and next on me is reports, commissioners' reports, our county administrator report, who wants to start?
Which is on the...
Which one is first?
The board for the county members is first.
Okay, so, I think I will start by just giving a brief...
Tell them we spent some money?
Yeah. Well, there's, yeah, the potential, we spent some money, and I reflected on that meeting at length, I went over all of those comments that was said.
Darlene wants a meeting, yeah.
Well, the meeting, the meeting that we attended, and we attended, not sitting exactly side by side, Pat and I, and we mostly listened, and we asked questions, but, and then we came forward with an offer. The meeting was, was, was the meeting that was called with the sheriff to mediate between the sheriff's dispatch and the threat of losing the sheriff on the C-Med issue, and the lieutenants, when they came here last week, if you remember, the chiefs, the fire chiefs were here.
We were engaged in that meeting.
We did not mediate that meeting, that was Senator O'Leary called that meeting together along with President Senate.
State delegation, the state was there, the Republican, Rose was there, the Cape Cod Hospital was there, the fire chiefs...
The Vineyard Hospital.
The Vineyard, yes, the Vineyard Hospital came, and we came, and there was much talk about the lack of funding for C-Med, and that Cape Cod Hospital came forward with $50,000 to put a stopgap so that C-Med could continue on the Cape through October. So, the fire chiefs, as you remember, they came and met with us last week, did discuss the county taking over the dispatch totally, and it's something that we could explore, it's not something that's in our, on our plate right now, because what we're looking forward to is the state taking over the sheriff's health care and that, that, him going to that entity. However, built into that was the understanding that the dispatch would stay local, and the sheriff would oversee it in that local capacity. They fear now, because there was this kind of threat that it was going to be pulled if that funding wasn't there, that that might, that that's sort of a harbinger of what is to come, you know, if this is so easy for them to do, it's, you know, they could be put up against the wall for other services that could be threatened and charged beyond their means for. So, that's what it was all about, and in the end, there was no money around. The legislation is looking into trying to locate a permanent funding source for this, but that's not going to happen by October 1st, so, and, and how do we negotiate goodwill and a permanent solution? So, Mark, in looking at around the room, whispered that it would be feasible that we could possibly come up with 50 grand to extend the C-Med operation for the entire region of Cape Cod through January, until we find a permanent solution to this. And seeing nobody else was coming to the table, and the state had no money, and they had no resources, I did put that out there, and it was much appreciated.
Excuse me, you put that out there?
I put it, I, I did make a statement that we would be willing to look to see if we had, if we could come up with this money, and of course, it had to go through the assembly for...
You did mention that.
Yes, yes, I did say that we could just write that check like that. So, Mark, would you like to add anything to...
Yeah, I think everybody was sitting on their hands, and, you know, nobody's got any money, and I thought, you know, this is important, regional operation, the C-Med piece, this gives the state some time, it sounds like they are confident that they will be able to come up with a mechanism to ensure not only the C-Med, funding for the C-Med operation, they were even, they were talking much broader about the entire operation of the 911 dispatch service. And one of the issues, one of the big issues with us taking it over, it was further refined, the sheriff's staff did put together his budget and information about his full dispatch and radio tech services, and it turns out that, you know, it costs about 2.8 million to operate that, that service, his revenues are about $1 million.
He gets 1.1 from Verizon.
He gets, he gets, they get PSAP money, what it's called, through the state, which is on the Verizon wireless communication bill, everybody pays into a fund apparently, and then gets divvied up, so his total revenues to cover that service are only $1 million one, so there was a $1 million seven gap, and so it makes it hard to keep it at the local, you know, to offer that service on a local level if they have a $1 million seven operating gap. So, the discussion really focused on seeing if there's a way the state, and through some mechanism, can close even that 1.7 million dollar operating gap, to ensure that that service, even if it goes with the sheriff to the state, will continue to provide these services on the Cape.
But when it's all said and done, the 1.7 million comes out of the sheriff's general budget.
General operating.
And this year, of all the entities across the board, the least affected were the criminal justice, not criminal justice, but sheriffs were the least affected by budget cuts, and our sheriff was cut $300,000, and as it turns out, the C-Med was about $250,000 that was, he was having this gap on. So, now, I have a lot of thoughts on that that I'd like to talk about with Mark, but...
As a practical matter, we're, we're offering to support, I mean, the only definite thing out of all of this...
Right.
Is that we're offering to support, what we're talking about, supporting by $50,000, the C-Med... thousand dollars, the C-Med program that would ensure that our constituents, the people in Cape Cod.
All of our citizens.
Would be in communication during an emergency.
Yes.
Transport to the hospital, and we're doing that in order to ensure that from October first to January first, that that would be in place.
That service is in place.
That's all, that's all the definite part, the rest is.
That is the definite part, everything else is speculation, and everything else is. Yes, exactly, that's why I think I would, you know, rather, my thoughts are just my thoughts on it, but that is a definite, and it will keep, I mean, it's a safety issue, and it's a public health issue, and it's.
I definitely agree, and I would like to make a motion that we start the process to go forward to support that, you know, let's say that supplement.
I believe we'll do a supplemental.
Okay, so we do that for the purpose of supporting this during that period of time?
I'm planning, I'm planning. I would supplement.
All in favor?
Aye. One other piece too, was the Department of Public Health, they were asked to study the, not only C-Med, but the dispatch services around the state, and they were asked to come up with a recommendation to the legislature, the Senate President, and they have to, they have a drafted date of, what is it, August, I think it is in August, and their concentration is uniformity, you know, they think these five districts around the state that provide these services, everybody does them a little bit differently, they're funded differently, in some districts, they're funded by the hospitals, and others are funded elsewhere. So it's gonna be very interesting to see what DPH comes up with as a recommendation, which will sort of be, I think, the jumping off point for any, for future deliberations.
One of the things that I think hasn't been looked at consistently is the ability of insurance that covers the cost of transport to contribute to the communication piece.
No, they made it very clear that there are no providers, by state law, that can contribute to this, but there are other ways to.
I'm talking about the individual person being transported on his insurance, that the cost of that transport has to include, in my opinion, the services that are necessary in order to safely transport that person to communicate with the hospital.
I see what you're saying, for them to tack on like another ten dollars, because part of that, part of the emergency service, not just the oxygen and the ambulance itself, but it's actually the radio contact that they can have to the hospital. But that can't be part of the ambulance fee, it would have to be a separate bill to the individual person, and it cannot be covered by any insurance, because insurance will not cover it, they made that very clear yesterday.
They did explore.
But there are other options for recurring revenues that they have, that where it can be covered, but it cannot be paid for by a provider, an insurance provider of any kind, government, private, Blue Cross, Harvard, Philblair, Medicare, none of those can pay for it.
All I remember, when, you know, when the fire chiefs used to come to town meeting in Howard, and say, you've got seven minutes, you know, in order to, in order to survive a cardiac infarction or something like that.
Right.
Is that I would be willing to pay for the cost of phone call.
Right.
To make sure that a EMT was in contact with a licensed and qualified physician, so that my personal care would, you know, would be all the same, and if it is a matter of having the ambulance service bill, the person's picked up.
But they can't.
For that service?
That they cannot, for the C-Med service, no, they made it very clear yesterday, that's not possible, the attorney was there, or the general counsel for Cape Cod.
Did anyone even think about the welfare of people?
I know, but it's just not, it's rotten pie.
No, and.
Well, I'd like to tell you what they did suggest, that, for instance, because these individuals are going to the emergency room, obviously, if they're in an ambulance, that's where they're going, you can add a certain amount to the emergency room bill, that would cover the cost of that, and then it could be paid for, so that could be a recurring revenue, but they have to work that out, they have to accept.
In that case, the hospital visibility.
Like fourteen cents.
Has to, has to add that into their cost basis.
That's right.
Which would put the responsibility for covering the cost of it to the hospital, since they have a.
That's right, and now hospitals are looking into that. The other thing that I think would be interesting to have, you know, there was always talk about, like, what is the sheriff's budget, and how much does this really cost, and of course, you know, he has a general budget, so it comes out of, you know, a general fund, it's not like everything is itemized, but in looking, in the proposal of them stating to the county that we should look at taking this over, seven towns sign up for the dispatch, seven, eight do not, I did ask, and there does seem to be a big level of satisfaction, and there's no complaint about the sheriff having this micromanagement control over these functions, there are committees, that are independent committees, that oversee the function of C-Med or the emergency service, and they all, you know, they're all, they all work together well, the sheriff, as long as it's working well, he stays out of it pretty much as far as, you know, just knowing, and, but, so my question was, let's take away the C-Med threat, why haven't these other towns, these other fire departments signed on? And, you know, there wasn't really a clear answer to that question, but I also would just like to know how, it would be interesting to know how many towns have these emergency, how many runs does each town do, how many dispatch services do they utilize, it would just be an interesting breakdown for each one, and what's the severity, because the reimbursement to the ambulance service is dependent on, some runs get more than others, depending on how severely injured the person is in that ambulance.
That's an interesting point, because when we were examining the need of a juvenile, was it a juvenile holding center or?
Yeah, right, right.
We looked at what the actual, the actual transport density was, and we found it was much less than we were being told, because it was, it was an interesting statistic, because when we got down to how many transports were made off Cape, it was a very small number compared to, you know, compared to the, you know, the presentation of it as being a bigger thing.
Right.
So I think that the idea of getting accurate data in order to make a decision is very useful.
I think it would be a great exercise to look at all that for everyone, everyone concerned, so that we can really. Some towns, I know, their fire departments do not transport off Cape anymore, they use, they help the private, those private ambulance services, because they can't afford to have their ambulances gone to go to Boston, so I know in Palma, they don't do any transportation out of, out of Cape. But the other issue too is, and the sheriff mentioned that, when you think about the C-Med, it's all part of the full dispatch service that he offers, and it doesn't, he has one person dedicated to C-Med on each ship, so to pull the C-Med out, it would cost far more, because you have to hire a whole group of TV. So there's some merit to keeping that whole service intact, the dispatch.
And so far, the sheriff hasn't charged back to any of the towns for that service, has he?
No, no, it's been a free service.
I think it's been, that's an important issue as far as the sheriff being willing to cooperate, and they were here, when they were here, the fire chiefs were here, they were uniformly afraid of the existing services, and as a matter of fact, the concern that they have had revolved more around keeping that service intact and at its high level of quality, which the sheriff basically has put in place.
Right.
As opposed to wanting to, it was a concern about, how do we, how do we keep this going and have some surety that it will continue?
In the end, if this was maybe approached in a different way, we might not have had it come to the head that it came, that it's come to, but all of these things are, you know.
I think, I think if the resolution.
In the end, it's not worth work, it's not worth, it's good for us to pursue and to know more.
I take the nonlinear way about this, in that I would like to see the sheriff going to the state. Have a completion, at that point, I think that the, there would be an opportunity for us to examine what our responsibility would be for.
I think the good resolution from all of this kind of coming to a head now was that it appears that, in my sense of, correct me if I got it wrong, was the balls in the legislature's court, they are looking for some mechanism to guarantee a funding stream, not only for the C-Med, but for the entire kind of communication piece, and perhaps to bring some kind of uniformity to the way this service is offered, not only here on the Cape, but statewide.
That's right.
If that happens, then this will have been not for naught.
Exactly, it'll have a very positive effect, yeah.
And in my conversations with the fire chiefs, I emphasize the fact that it's up to the legislature to decide how this thing goes forward.
Yeah, definitely, and, yes, and the Senate President has really taken the lead on this, I mean, she's, with the Senate President, who organized this meeting yesterday, and is following the whole thing very carefully, and particularly in terms of the funding, it's like, show me the money, and then we'll talk.
I wouldn't expect anything less.
Right.
Do you have anything else to add?
I do not, but I know you have big news, so do you?
Well, I have a couple of things, the NPO met on Monday, and the transportation proven plan for next year was cut out for review, but of importance, the local trash haulers, Route Six, and myself and selectmen Paul have been pushing this to get some resolution on whether or not they're. Capacity, so a lot of the haulers were being told that they had to go on town roads, which obviously don't have the capacity to.
Thank you.
Supported, you know, that was, that was a good thing, the, so the Cape Light Compact met in Yarmouth, or not, gave an update to the town of Yarmouth last night, and basically revolved around, well, you were there, Matt, and to me, it revolved around, there was a private entity that's offering a spot price, high-risk deal versus the Cape Light Compact offering a fixed-price offer with, you know, with a over term, the risk is to the buyer with the, with the program that was being offered by the private vendor, and the risk is minimized, if not eliminated, with the Cape Light Compact offer, so that, there was a lot of other conversation about that, but that seemed to be the emphasis.
Or can I just add, I think the message too was, you know, to any, any citizen out there who is offered a power supply deal, you gotta do your homework, you gotta know what the fine print says, you gotta make sure that you understand what the true costs of that are, because oftentimes, the price of the power is not either, the only term you need to look at, nor is it always the most important term, so you really need to do your homework, do the due diligence, and make sure you're getting the deal you think you're getting.
And that's the message we would want everybody to hear, because there are, you know, there are people that, you know, they're out there legitimately trying to make a living, but in their offers, it's the caveat after, the buyer beware, make sure they have all of this stuff. I had an opportunity to interview Steve Abbott on my program, Tony Chatter, and one of the points that, you know, that I was trying to review with him was that Cape Cod Healthcare was a successful regional consolidation, and I asked him what were the takeaways, and he made the point that they had a plan, and he was the builder, so he was the implementer, so the plan was in place, but the other thing that he emphasized, you know, that was the key to it, was that there was a shared vision as to what it would look like at the end, and there was a great amount of unselfishness on the part of the people that were participating that allowed it to happen, and that, you know, the point that resonated with me was the, you know, the fact that they had a plan, but they also had a, what I would call, a commitment to an outcome that served the needs of the people, as opposed to an outcome that maintained, let's say, authority and force, you know, made the point that the, Cape Cod Hospital and Palma Hospital, you know, treated each other as equals, and that one of the things that they had, I guess, was the president of Palma Hospital became kind of the chair of the whole thing, but the excessive, going from a hundred and twenty-one board members to twenty-two, and being respectful of everybody was something that I think was, you know, was a lesson for all of us, and at some point, as we pursue, you know, regional activities, I think that we could probably study, you know, their process more carefully, because I think there's a lot of useful stuff to get out of it. And then finally, the big announcement today, I serve as the Howard delegate to the Cape Cod Regional Transportation Authority, but I was also asked, in my dual capacity as a county commissioner and a delegate from Howard, to serve on the, on the final vetting and search committee, and.
The new director of the RTA, is that what they're called?
Oh, yeah, it would be the director of the RTA, and we had recommended unanimously that Tom Cahere be accepted by the board, and I'm happy to tell you that ninety-one percent of the board being present unanimously voted for it, and that included all of the towns of Cape Cod, Barnstable, Young.
Every town.
But there should be great kudos going to the town of Sandwich, because one of their, let's see, Marie Bruckner provided all of the overhead support for doing the nuts and bolts stuff, and doing all the sorting, we had sixty-one people that applied.
Wow.
We interviewed, we interviewed seven, actually eight people, and we came up with a solid recommendation for, you know, for number one, but we also identified a great second candidate, so that we have, you know, we had gone through a process that had members of the community, Dave Willard served on that committee, upon his Wiki, representing the planning agency, and we had the upper, middle, lower Cape, all of the personnel committee, so it was a, it was a great process, it was well documented, and when Tom Cahere's name was put before the board, there was a, it was a two-page document that basically summarized all of what they'd gone through, and I think it's a template for going, for fulfilling any important management position for, you know, for any regional entity, because it did take into account the interest that the public has, it did take into account the needs of the organization, and I think we've made a good choice.
So Bill, was it ninety-one percent of those present, or ninety-one percent of the board?
It's a weighted vote.
It's a weighted vote, yeah.
Only ninety-one percent of the board was present.
Were present, so it was a hundred percent of those present, which represented ninety-one percent of the board.
But it's important to note that it was unanimous, there was no, there was no abstaining, or not voting, and so.
That was great.
Very good, so Tom must have felt.
It's a solid.
Tom was not there, or he was there?
Yes, he was there.
So he must have felt pretty good.
So when would he be starting?
Well.
September first?
September first is the start date, and he's going through the disintegration process of the state. But we're, you cannot know how personally delighted I am that we have Tom working for us, I just think that it goes moving the whole RTA in a direction to make it more of a user-friendly, more of a, let's see, a responsible organization, and puts the onus for delivery of services on, you know, on staff, as opposed to all the volunteer, because all of us were happy to do, to do the outreach and the advocacy, we did need someone that understands that and will work for it, so, anyway, that's my.
When does he start?
September first.
Excellent, that's good news, and he doesn't have to find a house.
No.
He doesn't have to find a house, he's right nearby. Okay, and you had other good candidates, I imagine?
We had, we had eight.
Really good.
Really good candidates, and at least two, I'm talking to here, and second choice, which would have been.
Also very good. Okay, good, excellent. Pat, anything? Only what we just did with the fire chiefs.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, all right, do you have a report?
No, nothing to add, that was, that was pretty much.
Maggie does.
Maggie does, thank you.
I have one issue, I have a request from employee Don Reynolds from the Facilities Department, he neglected to carry over his vacation hours from FY-oh-nine and lost eighty hours, just two weeks, and he's apologized to that, and said it fell through the cracks on his end, and is asking that you have that restored and be carried over to this fiscal year, if you do so, I would recommend that you also require that it be used like you have. for all their employees by December 31st, 2039.
If that has been the standard procedure, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, we've never had, we've never been overs about doing that.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Considering that each employee has to take some hits because of the economy, that's kind of an additional hit there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay. If that is all there is to cover, I think we may adjourn.
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? We are now officially adjourned. Thank you.